Alright, well, greetings and thank you everyone. This is the October twenty-sixth edition of the Board of Supervisors meeting. Join us in the present evening.
My allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under God. No division, no rebellion.
Oh, uh, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Thank you.
Comments or questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes at October twelve?
Motion.
Comments or questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Pat, can we please have a report of executive session?
Sure, maybe before the meeting's even. We're meant to make a session to discuss funding for the invasion of the state average. Now, the decision to make on both the table.
Thank you. Public comment on any non-agenda items? We have, uh, no one in person tonight and there is no one on June. Uh, announcements, just a couple of quick things. Our next scheduled budget meetings to set the twenty twenty-four budget is, uh, October twenty-seventh during the Board of Supervisors work session at eight AM. November third, eight AM during the Supervisory Work Session. Uh, Thursday, November sixteenth at eight thirty AM. And Tuesday, November twenty-first at eight thirty AM. Um, on November second, there will be a grand opening and ribbon cutting for one of our newest businesses, Envision Field Township. It's, um, inspired by our wellness studio. We've got, uh, a question, you can, you're more than welcome to see all of these things online. Uh, Angel's Closet is accepting donations. Again, you can see that online. Um, Person of the Year nominations are open. So if you have anyone that you'd like to nominate for Person of the Year, please, uh, visit our website or call Holly Dennis at the township. And Mark, where do you want, uh, something?
Open daily through November, it's all for one in a dollar a week. Thirty-nine a weekend, so it's on a special this week and the weather.
Beautiful. Um, and lastly, on, uh, since our next Board of Supervisors meeting is November sixteenth, um, and the only meeting in November, uh, on Veterans Day, November tenth, the Pocono Chapter of Quilts of Valor is presenting several quotes to honor veterans. And they're presenting directly to the veterans at the Community and Cultural Center. That'll be at ten o'clock on November the tenth. And we congratulate Wayne Bolt, who is this person's, uh, this twenty twenty-two's Person of the Year, who are receiving a quote of, uh, Valor and, uh, he also saved one of our money from the thing. So, uh, Mike and Mark, if you have any other announcements, I hear the temperature's very low this weekend. You have? Alright, uh, that brings us to our respondents. Michelle, do you have any correspondence?
Oh, we do, we have two correspondents. The first from Bushkill Emergency Court, making supervisors for your support and everything's included in your packet. The, um, Monroe County Historical Association, thank you for supporting the Raise Your Glass and Support the Past. This was an event that was attended by Holly Dennis, who is liaison for the Historical Commission.
Thank you, Michelle. And that brings us right to you, Mike, for the President's Report.
Motion from our general count, one hundred and ninety thousand nine, eleven dollars and sixty percent.
All seconded, one second. Uh, comments or questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion from our sewer count, thirty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars and twelve cents.
All seconded, comments or questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion from our balcony count, fifteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and twelve cents.
All seconded, uh, comments and questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion from our liquor view account, fourteen thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-five cents.
All seconded, uh, comments or questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Mike. And that brings us to the Correspondents' Report.
Uh, thank you. The first item on my report is the Jingling Temple. As, uh, board is aware, uh, we filed an important action, uh, to Jingling Temple for certain of the last year's buildings. Since that point, uh, they have taken two of them down. My understanding, I did receive an email corresponding from, uh, the Prodigy's official office at the township that they closed out and completed everything they needed to do with the demolition coming. So at this point, I'm just looking for authorization from the board to withdraw. At this point. And the motion will be drawn.
Thank you.
Comments or questions, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you. The next item on my report, the First Amendment is looking at inflation, really, DC Solar Project, LIP. Uh, the board is aware you led into a, a green open with DC Solar, uh, through Co-Stars contract a few months ago. And, uh, they're, as my understanding, they are starting to proceed with at least some of the time to the building to official for review. And the time period for payment has come up. They may ask for an adjusted or amended payment schedule. My understanding, the board discussed the second last meeting, uh, you've authorized, you've revised amended payment schedule. And that is a path that's exited to what is the amendment to the, uh, the First Amendment to the court of law. So unless there's any questions or comments from the board, I would just make sure that that payment schedule is accurate. And if it is, uh, we see the motion to authorize the execution of that First Amendment.
I will make that motion. Any comments or questions? Do you just put your hands, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item on our Board of zoning amendments, as the board is well aware, uh, we're just slowly getting through the articles, uh, with, for the anticipated, uh, content of zoning amendment and the township, uh, the two articles before this evening, we're discussing the questions or comments. Uh, one, the first one is Article Two, and that's the definition section. Uh, so what I did, what's before you is, uh, as you remember, with all these articles, they were provided to me, now, with already some track changes in, uh, that were done before my time. So what you have in front of you is a version with some additional track changes from me, as well as some comments. Where you see in the comment section, new, uh, that's indicating that there's new definitions. You aren't currently in your definition section, but they were called out as track changes when I received the document. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so at some point, those definitions were added. They're not currently in ordinance, I didn't add them, uh, but they are being proposed at least throughout that I got. Can we call it, can we draw?
Yeah. Yeah, I know, I remember that whole, what went back and forth on that.
Um, so what I can do, let's get specific questions. So the one convenience store, I think, uh, for this one discussion previously, but, uh, currently convenience store definition has a, uh, a retail store with less than five thousand square feet. In the proposed definition section, you proposed to change that to ten thousand square feet for convenience store. My comment is just to make sure that that's something that the board wants, uh, moving forward.
I remember something, I'm trying to read all that on, on sale, thirty-six, that are, that'd be wildly different. I don't know, it was all standard. What is the definition of convenience store value?
They'll pay no more like this to me.
That goes convenience store.
Well, convenience store, yeah. Convenience store would be, you can see further definition, uh, for the sale of, remember, right? And they also sell, um, the fuel, uh, that not included auto, uh, service stations, the reason with their shop. The convenience store is typically, you would, you would like to wall dollar which is. Dollar general, I'm looking to see if you have, like, retail, small scale.
Or really.
You want a, a point dollar, oh, so you would walk, I suppose, seventy-five thousand, fourteen. But you might not have small scale, large scale, it's pure though.
Yeah, and, you know, well, no, you're, you're. How weird, well, you know, you know, retail, oh, there's more than seven thousand, fourteen.
We have stored large detail, which is more at least something about that. And we have stored retail, less than seven thousand, fourteen. So if you want a less than or else, I think that's one comment I hope to call out. So if you want to wait to do that, G, uh, fine. Uh, just, uh, I'll make a note that we'll circle back, I guess. And I'm pretty sure I've been talking with, um, emails when I sent them, if I can make sure it's worth it. And sure. Um. Oh, fence and wall. Fence and wall, the definition of fence wall? Uh, I have, I have. For fence wall, we carve out, we could say, it does not serve as a, as a, as a standing wall or a building wall. I just wanted to make sure that you wanted to stay with the, the fence wall or the standing wall, don't make one.
You don't have a standing wall?
We do.
You do.
That's right. Right, by definition. I think there's more landscaping. On the fence and wall, it's more to do with landscaping. That doesn't have a specific purpose, like a standing wall.
Um, my next comment was on floodplain. For the definition in this, for floodplain in this version, it's a different definition than what's in your current ordinance. Um. When I was putting the comment, I did not, I did not have opportunity to check the D E P to see if they're pulling it straight from the D E P regs. But I'm not sure if you see, you see what I highlighted, I'm not sure what that's supposed to be. Um, so I need to go back and see if they try to pull this from D E P regs. And if they did, I'll just make sure to read better because that highlighted section doesn't make that. Um. Food car, food truck, a hill. Garden, a hill. Home base, uh, low impacted, new. No impact, you have. The changes I made in the book that, the changes on tracking for home based business with low impact and no impact, they were reversed. Uh, so a low impact cannot include the, the provisions for no impact because if they were, it would be no impact, right? And no impact, yes, you can incorporate the reason for low impact, but not the other way around. Right? Any questions on that? Uh, land development? So your current land develop, your current zoning incorporates the definition for land development from the N P C. Uh, this one, I just have two comments, can we produce discussions or anything? One is the highlighted, the highlighted portion of it, developing according to the following is not considered development. That's not required in the N P C and it's not in your per, per ordinance. So my comment is, just to see if the township did want to add those exceptions to the definition of land development. Um, and the other comment was, this is your zoning ordinance. Land development is more geared towards your S A W O. So you could consider, just to keep things consistent, referring to incorporating the definition of, certainly, S A W O. And leave it at that. I mean, right now, you start off with the definition, this S A W O shall apply. But then you go into a long lengthy definition, and some of which is not in the N P C. Uh, and it kind of, when you do something like that, it's always supportive or inconsistent. Say you, say you have your S A W O at some point, change the definition. If you don't change this one, they're going to be inconsistent.
They're doing, maybe we should.
Is everyone okay with that?
Is that a key in our S A W O?
Yes, it might not be word for word. I mean, I'll, I'll confirm. I mean, land development is the most important thing to understand for purposes of S A W O. Because a S A W O provision in, in the S A W O is applicable to land development or subdivision. So, uh, I would suggest if you're using some definition, just to simply incorporate in the first definition that I had in S A W O.
But I agree with all these things that are here.
So you do agree with all of the exceptions that I had, but do you have any exceptions to the definition of the S A W O?
And, and if they are.
Then why would they follow that definition?
I would suggest that you change the S A W O.
Okay. That's what we'll do. And everyone's okay with all those exceptions? Because right now, those are, you know, that's, those are more exceptions that the N P C requires.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is everyone okay with them?
I think the idea was to make things easier.
Okay.
With more projects than not.
That's what we're going to do, we're just going to have, in the zoning ones, we will just refer to incorporate the S A W O definition for land development. And we will confirm that the S A W O definition includes all of the, et cetera. I mean, like, A one, C, that should be part of the S A W O definition, a subdivision of one.
Right.
And you know, the, where is it, I'm sorry, A one, C. Oh, I expect it is. The, this stuff is in the S A W O that doesn't even here as well. Right, I would agree. I will say, when we look at A one, A, B, and C. And. In A, A one, A, B, and C, that, that language is pretty much taking straight from the N P C. It's where you get on to the next page, where you start writing all those exceptions. That, those, those exceptions are specific to the middle of the field, actually. Those are not taking. But I think I understand, so what the board wants, we're taking that out, we're simply going to refer to and incorporate the definition of S A W O. And we're going to confirm that the S A W O definition is specific with what's in this draft, which includes those additional stuff.
The exception.
Right?
Right.
Okay, I do that. So like, on B two, that word, we may, and we've just made it a little simple. My understanding?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I see that that was, okay.
Yeah. Because.
I don't know if we want.
This was back when we looked at what I think Toby Hannah did, which they said, if he follows these design elements, he can skip it. They don't want in that part, which people were complaining about how difficult it was.
I mean, just something to keep in mind. Sometimes you'll get, I think you had one not too long ago. Uh, maybe it was a campground that was going to put in like an accessory structure for, for non-residential use. And by definition, that's land development. But because it was such a minimal proposed improvement, you, you considered, I think they, they requested a waiver of land development. And you granted, I think, with a number of conditions, and you can do that. So, so some, say if you weren't to adopt new concessions and you get some application that they come to you and they say, this is really small or it shouldn't be, you could always consider a waiver of land development, which does, it allows them not to go through the entire process. But maybe there are a couple of things you want to add as a condition of that waiver. Uh, but that would be a different approach as to bringing in exceptions directly.
Well, because these are smaller, that, that we won't have to look at the voice gap to come here and do something small that runs about.
Well, I remember calling back on first, we said that we would always have to go back there. But what were the one, what, what did we look at last, that was, like? Castle. You know, so he's got very noted out, oh, we just, they don't have, we just, they don't have to do this. I'd rather have it more lined up early, factoring that.
So, and then the definition of life care facility. Um, that highlighted section, I wasn't sure what the purpose of that was, if anyone recall.
It, it doesn't make any sense.
Right? So I would suggest you hit that unless there's a reason it was plugged in.
No idea.
When I reach out to G D on the other end, do you want me to check with her to play and pick me out? Yeah. Uh. I was going to say, I wanted to say, if we were to throw the frozen, you know. When, first of all, home, you know. I just plugged in, uh, you, you have that draft solar system use amendment currently being reviewed by the planning commissions. If you proceed and adopt that, it is kind of plugging those new definitions in sections. That just for me to pack one of them time for the, for adoption. And, I think that might. Uh, I plugged in two just comments. Are we, do you want to consider, uh, definition for warehouse and distribution centers?
I think we could.
Well, isn't there a, um, standard?
The town, the, the town, it did come out with a recent, there's a couple of them floating around. Uh, but if that's something you want us to incorporate into this, we can.
Yeah.
Okay. Everyone in favor of that?
Yeah.
I think that's all I have, unless the board had anything, anything?
Yeah.
Nope.
Alright, the other article is Article ten, that's the environmental protection and nutrition standards. A lot of these revisions were in it uh, before I got involved. I know they've made some good corrections, but nothing subtle. Do you know if we have any questions or comments with respect to the track change versions? Any other track changes?
No.
I did include, one of my changes is in section one hundred dash thirty, wetlands and water bodies. I just included the provision, the township may also require a jurisdiction, jurisdictional determination from the U S R for engineers to keep necessary by the time of it. And that's the only addition I made. And the only, the only comment I had is, uh, on the lighting. I believe you've mentioned some dark sky provisions, did you want to incorporate those? If there's, if there's additional ones other than the ones that are tracked in here.
Mm-hmm. Do you have that model? I thought I had said, but with a lot of the, the model for minutes for that.
I'll track that down.
Okay.
This might be a good place to incorporate.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's all I have on this one, unless, uh, you guys have anything. Anything else on that?
No.
Not, they're done.
Alright. Anything?
Yeah.
Trying. And we'll pull it coming. Well, eventually, remember, we're doing these little bites at a time, and eventually, the whole package will be for you with the small changes and additions we're talking for. Those are the only items under my report for this evening. I'll have some comments and things, and, uh, some other items later on in the agenda, but that's all I have for my report, unless there's something else you can forward or report.
I have nothing for, okay. Alright, so that, um, brings us to the engineer's report. Which the engineer is not here, but the board has in their packet, a letter from, uh, Riley regarding tractor supply and their recommendations that a partial release of their security, um, be done. And I believe that the board has some comments on it?
Yeah, um, well, Riley was the engineer for the township, was overseeing tractor supply. Um, their letter dated October twenty-fourth recommends holding back. Let me, let me step back. Cracked fight, as before we did, Riley is recommending a holdback of six thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and change um, for landscaping improvements. Uh, some of the landscape is not made in fruit infancy, so saying to hold back some to reclaim, et cetera. Um, but he doesn't say, and I'm recommending to the board, um, we don't have all of our legal and engineering bills yet. So we do have a remaining container of twenty-six hundred dollars. But I would say that, that may be insufficient, so rather than release it, this money and try to get it back, I'm saying we should hold another forty-nine hundred dollars for that. And also, what's not addressed in Riley's letter is sidewalks. Um, A, the sidewalk from tractor supply to S A W O has not been done. Um, that's part of their scope. But the, the grid on scope, the developer was here, they got approvals, that hasn't been done yet. And also, um, I believe that the sidewalks that they did put in in front of tractors, tractor supply are, are not correct. Uh, if you look at the sidewalks.
They're below, where?
Well, they're below, sidewalks typically, the top of the slab is the same height as the top of the curb. If you go down, you'll see the curb height is probably, by eye, probably three inches above the sidewalk. So, I mean, you already see during the fall, we collect the water. More importantly, you know, water turns to ice in the winter. Uh, you know, so it could be a nightmare for pedestrians during the winter. So maybe I'm, I'm wrong, but I, I don't see how those sidewalks are correct. Um, so I'm recommending that we hold back ten percent of their line items for the six-inch and four-inch sidewalks. Uh, so that's another fourteen thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. The total I'm recommending, we hold back is twenty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So I would make that in a motion to release their security less twenty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Any comments or questions? The security that they were requesting, it was seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Seven sixty-four. That would matter to six. Uh, uh.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two.
Seven again, you know.
A significant amount.
Seven forty thousand, I would imagine.
So there's been a motion in the second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, old business. Um, resolution twenty dash twenty twenty-three dash one to authorize the placement of banner. So, uh, this resolution has been revised to eliminate the banner location that no longer exists. To now instead of three locations, there's two. So is there a motion? Don't make, I would. Okay, a motion from Mark.
Sure.
Second from Mike, any comments or questions? The one by Patrick Hill. So, yeah, the one by Patrick Hill that's controlled by the Bushkill group. And then the second one is, um, on two oh nine, it's a section of that and.
Westlake.
Yeah, Westlake.
I want to run it through, that's one real.
Wendy's one, yeah, okay, two Wendy's, two Wendy's by Wendy's. Wendy's one, yeah, two Wendy's, two Wendy's by Wendy's. Okay, motion in the second, comment, questions, all in favor? Um and that brings us to EMS and fire packs, which will remain on our agenda all of the time, just to give the public uh as much heads up notice as possible that this is uh coming down the pipe. Um discussion? And no motion?
Um I mean, as far as discussion, I mean, I think it's, you know, worthwhile to have this out there. You know, that, that's the way we're heading, hasn't been voted on, but um it looks like the only way to financially meet the obligations or, or the needs of fire and EMS, uh it would have to be a tax increase or, or a dedicated tax. So uh through budget meetings, we'll, we'll sort that out.
There any questions or question for me on this at this point?
Not yet. Yeah, we're still sorting through it. The only new piece of information is we found out that the county can only fit one line on their bill. So we cannot have, yeah. So we cannot have a fire tax and a V M S tax when people get their bills, so it'll be combined and we'll have to split it on our end.
Well, your, yeah, your tax resolution will make sure what.
Correct, right. If you can, instead of the.
Let's pirate, it's the soft, the pirate technology software. Comes back again. So uh Mark, you have anything to add?
No.
Okay, um sale of the municipal ballot court. Um so uh it, this would be a great place to authorize the solicitor to get the bid documents together.
Motion.
Any comments or questions? Right, so uh all in favor?
Um so I'll, I'll start putting them together. Well, just reiterate that, uh if you remember the first time around, we did have a minimum bid uh amount in there. I'll just probably get to next meeting when we have the doctor to go, assuming, assuming do I, we are waiting for the survey.
Yeah, we're waiting for the all day survey that should take about another two weeks before they have it done.
And I just wanna make sure no one's surprised when I come back and ask what that, if you wanna keep it the same as the first time around or if you're gonna adjust it, that before we get the docs out, uh at some point, I'll just need some guidance on that. That's all.
All right, terrific. Thank you, Pat. May the second time be the charm. Uh new business. Is there a motion to uh approve resolution ten dash twenty twenty three, which is a resolution for the destruction of specific paper records to make, that will then be maintained in an electronic format?
Motion.
Uh second, uh any comments or questions? All in favor? And then I can leave the next one to you, Michael.
Yeah, make a motion to waive the fee for the layman intermediate for the second team for use of Echo Park.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Also you?
I'll make a motion authorize um secretary to authorize a sale or advertise the sale of a well, may I have one sixty roll on municipal bid?
Any comments or questions? Yeah, what do you?
Because I call it muni bid. I always say muni, I don't know why. Wanna spell it for him?
I could, and I underlined it six times.
You missed it on her last call though. Motion second, all in favor? What do you think you'll get for that?
Um probably about fifteen thousand. Yeah, but when you're looking to know, it's forty five. But.
Um that brings us to public comment. Still no one on Zoom, but we do have a public. Yes, I will, I will thank you for your support of our now. And I trust that your guests joined itself. We introduced them and uh certainly they've joined other municipal officials. Uh any other public comment or comments in the board? No? Michael, your favorite one.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Comments or questions, all in favor?
Yeah, 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 that's probably most important. Oh, good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. What's going on in golf course? Every year of this. They authorized it to be prepared. Last week, last, there was a this year.
Like, well, last year?
Okay, so there's a provision. And you, and you drew the uh complaining about uh.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming on. You wanna work hard type for security, but you have a full double duty.